Oxner passed all, did all four motions pass unanimously?
No.
The final?
The preliminary development plans on district plan was five one vote.
Five one, okay. All right, but it passed?
It did pass.
Okay. Well, yeah, I saw all of them except that one, so.
He didn't stay up to discuss?
Yes. Yeah, five one was that one.
Right. Well, that's interesting to have the annexation and all that, so, after all this time?
After all this time.
They have a lot of work to do at the FDP stage. Yeah, they have a lot of work there.
So that'll be, we'll come back to planning commission at some point in the future.
I think they accepted all of the recommendations that the advisory committees had.
They did, they did.
And they added, did they add it on?
They added the word fencing to the trail provision or condition, which was, I think, open space or pro-stack, one of the two, had that as part of their condition also, fencing and trails. So.
Got it.
Was there another, there wasn't another add-on?
No, there is some modifications to the language for the annexation agreement, but nothing too significant.
I was holding off in case we might get one more straggler. We were just talking about this finals week, you guys sit over, I sit over as much as I can. We were just discussing Oxner.
Okay.
So, did you get to watch the board at all last night? Passed the annexation.
Okay.
The PDP, ZDP.
Yep.
The preliminary plat you guys passed, but then they passed the annexation agreement with some changes to that.
Mainly on wells, and they expanded the language rather than made it more restrictive.
All right.
Good.
Well, I can jump right into chapter sixteen. You want to start?
Right. Okay, so, well, we start with Article twenty, and this is general development standards. And this has combined a whole list of sections in the original, in the existing code. Sixteen one ninety-five, seven eleven, seven thirteen, seven fourteen, seven fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. So there's a lot of, but those are all like design standards and things like that, that they pulled from, you know, different, basically the seven hundreds are all kind of lined up, and the only other one was one ninety-five from the original code, which was some general, general standards. So anyway, those have been combined, okay? So the first one is subsection sixteen twenty ten nine, which would be on page one twenty-seven, yeah, bridge line view protection. It said, I'm, we're saying here, subsection sixteen one ninety-five nine A of the current code, dealing with visibility to ridge lines, the three hundred foot buffer setback along US thirty-six was deleted. This was deleted to allow the greatest flexibility for the town when considering development plans for the town center project. There is language in the US thirty-six corridor comprehensive development plan, IGA, regarding setbacks from US thirty-six that states regulatory parties shall, to the extent possible, negotiate to maximize such setbacks. So that was the rationale for that. Otherwise, that section about ridge lines remains the same. And you could see on the side mark, you know, on the side, comment on the side. Basically, it was one sentence that was removed, all right? Comment? Yeah.
Yeah. What's, do we know what the right-of-way is specifically?
Three hundred feet.
On thirty-six?
That's all the way across.
Three hundred feet all the way across?
I'm pretty sure. I'm not certain of that, but it's a big number.
A big number.
So the old code says.
Well, in a way, we couldn't encroach into the right-of-way anyway.
Right. This is, yeah, exactly.
The right-of-way margin is actually, as you know, you can see it, is quite large. Especially if you get a good idea because of all the landscapes and you get over by interlocking, that's all in the right-of-way.
Right.
And their flow line, I mean, there's just a fair amount of distance anyway in the right-of-way because it's so big.
So did the current code say that additional three hundred feet was needed?
Before, yeah. You can see it on page one twenty-seven here of your modified code. That part that was deleted, there was an extra three. Well, it says along the US corridor, US thirty, adjacent to the right-of-way or within three hundred feet of the right-of-way, all new development applications required to submit and implement site plans and planning plans that effectively address the visibility and buffering concerns to and from the development. So that's kind of like, you know, a general statement that was in the code, and then it was taken out because we recovered in these other documents.
And this intergovernmental agreement is with Lafayette, Lewisville, Boulder, Boulder County, maybe Broomfield, I'd have to go back and double check.
But for our purposes, we don't necessarily want to maximize the setbacks to the extent that someone.
Well, and the language in the IGA says, to the extent possible.
I understand.
So.
It's the same kind of, kind of general language.
I'm fine leaving it just the way it is, so, the way it's drafted, so.
Okay.
Good for that, okay?
Next one is sixteen twenty twenty. Here is, this material comes from Article, I guess that's thirty-four, section sixteen seven eleven of the current code, since the criteria deals with both multifamily and non-residential developments. These words were added in the section heading. No other language changes were made except for item D, metal buildings of the current code, which was moved to Articles subsection sixteen six one fifty B, and then was suggested be admitted by the planning commission. Do you recall that one, that discussion? So it's just adding something up in the heading here. Otherwise, it's the same. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of wording here, okay? It's how you get, and then you get, well, we come up on that. The next one is number three, because you'll notice on page one twenty-nine, there's a long deletion on the side. Number three says, section sixteen seven one twelve, seven twelve, town center of the current code was deleted since this zone district has been deleted from the zone district list. So that whole business dealing with the town center was taken out. Because we got rid of that zone district. Okay?
I remember.
So that's why we have this big deletion over here, the sign.
Okay.
All right, number four, section sixteen twenty thirty, deals with original superior. Section, it's section sixteen seven one three of the current code, and there's no change in the technical content. Okay? All right. Number five is section sixteen twenty forty dash forty, multifamily developments, which is section sixteen seven one four of the current code, there's no changes to technical content except for the following, okay, there's one. Section sixteen seven one four, print B, print four of the current code, dealing with secondary and service entrances, was deleted and moved intact to subsection sixteen twenty-three twenty F. I think that's in the loading section, right? All right, so it was, it was just moved to a spot that was more appropriate for it.
It is in fact there. Okay?
All right, next one, section sixteen twenty dash fifty. Commercial, et cetera, types of developments, core developments, in which is section sixteen seven one five of the current code, with no changes to technical content except for the following. Section sixteen seven one five, print A, print one, the last sentence of the current code, dealing with these uses adjacent to the town center was deleted. This language is no longer needed, adjacent properties already built or zoned office. That's the one on the side here on page one thirty-three. That part was deleted, that sentence.
What you have is, adjacent to the proposed town center project is Perry Plaza, which exists, and then the properties to the north, the WEDA or Discovery Office Park, which is.
South.
South, sorry. And then, and then the two properties, Spicer and Carlson, which are zoned office.
You're deleting this because it references the town center?
Yes.
Basically?
Yeah.
Yeah, the thought there is, it's, the language is, was in there to ensure that the uses adjacent to this town center would be compatible. But by the developments that currently exist or the property of the way it's zoned, I think.
Essentially already does that.
Right.
Because it's zoned office, Discovery Park or.
Right.
That was the thought.
Good.
All checks.
Okay. All right.
Then we go to section sixteen twenty dash sixty. That's old sixteen dash seven one six of the current code, there's no changes there. Sixteen twenty dash seventy. With sixteen dash one seven of the current code, there's no change there. Sixteen twenty dash eighty. Commercial standards, all right, Article fourteen of the current code, and there's no changes to the exact technical content except for the comment, for the following. Section sixteen three twenty of the current code was moved intact to section sixteen twenty-three dash twenty G. That's sort of similar with the one up above in five, it went to F. So those are loading things that went over to that section, so, never lost the content, just moved to a different spot. That gets us to Article twenty-one. Okay?
Okay. Got it?
Landscaping, which is Article thirty-five of our current code. Okay, sixteen twenty-one dash ten, print A, print three. We had a plant list, and we removed it from the code, and it's obtained now from the Parks and Recreation Department. We've been through that, I think. It was in the back of the code?
Yeah, we talked about this.
We talked, right?
Yeah.
So, and then section sixteen twenty-one dash ten, B three. Three, minimum landscape density charts and notes were moved intact from section sixteen dash eight 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 of the current code. The chart needs to have lines added for clarity. That may show up in a different version, I don't know. Or in your, your version, Matt. And I went through these numbers, and I, they got them all.
Eight eight eight?
Yeah. Yeah, eight eight eight. That guy right there. Okay. Now, the only thing, I mean, these kinds of things are, I mean, if someone says, well, I think we ought to change a number or something, I think that gets you into the morass of thinking about the whole thing, and these standards may be need to be developed by a whole different group of landscape experts or something. But I mean, this is stuff that we've had for some time, and they're, as far as I can see, they're still quite normal in terms of what landscape architects are recommending in terms of these types of standards. So many for millennial feet, all that kind of thing.
But the content itself.
We've never had, we've never had a problem with these standards in terms of being, I mean, in our, the landscape plans, most developers, in fact, all come up with it pretty good in terms of the amount of trees and stuff they have.
Well, this is just minimum densities anyway.
Minimum densities, yeah.
And this, there's no changes to the chart anyway, right?
No, there's no change, and that's happened and occurs, and the notes goes way over to the next page, one forty-two. So is that in, in the, did you have the new one in there? Do you have the, the new document?
No.
No, okay.
I can, I can pull it up.
Well, I was wondering if, we're telling them they need to put some lines in there so we can read this thing. It used to have it, I believe, in the old code. Section sixteen twenty-one ten B four. The minimum planning distance charts was moved intact from section sixteen eight eight seven of the current code. Chart needs to have lines and so on that make it easier to read.
Are you guys going to remember to go back and put lines in the chart, or do we need to?
Well.
Put it on the list so you guys don't miss that?
It will be on the list because it's, the list of stuff that we've already decided is okay, we'll have that comment in there.
Okay.
Yeah, you got the.
Well, I didn't know if you were going to go back and look at the stuff that was okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's some things in that list that we'll have to.
I trust you.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, next one. Section sixteen twenty-one ten B five. Plant size mixing chart is the same as the current code. And this one. This is, you know, we've used this before. Okay, section sixteen twenty-one ten B six, the plant species diversity chart, which is the next one.
Yeah, it looks like it's formatting to a, to a, an automatic.
Yeah.
Date. Format.
Date.
March, twelfth of July.
So that'll be fixed to, to be the same as before.
Right.
I did put in the, I can't remember, six to something and twelve to something, I don't know, I don't know what they're. Probably six to twelve and twelve to, I don't know, there's something wrong here. We'll just, we'll just have that fixed. Okay, and then sixteen twenty-one ten B seven. This is a wildlife accessible water surfaces, and there was a distance requirement there of two hundred feet. And if we go to the old code, can you find that, Matt? It was. Oh, boy. And I didn't write it down there, did I? Hold on a second. Article thirty-five, should be able to find it. Article thirty-five. Where's landscaping? There it is. Yeah, there it is. The last one, water li, accessible water surface must be provided in a landscape plan when more than two hundred feet from either an existing or planned water surface. In other words, so let's say you have a detention pond, and you're on a fairly large site. You got to add another one within two hundred feet, or if it's beyond, you got to add another one. And we felt that this gets to be, you know, fairly onerous because they're going to have, they're going to have probably water detention anyway. And so we can, we can talk about, you know, having their accessible water surfaces there, but we, we need to have them planted into the plant rather than having this arbitrary distance. We ran into that with, didn't we run into that with, up here with AWEDA? I think we did.
I'm not sure I understand this requirement.
Well, this was, I remember the discussion we had, there was a fellow who lived in Rocket Creek, who was part of the National Wildlife Federation, well, maybe it was before that, before you were here. But at any rate, they were very keen on backyard habitat and landscape stuff.
Yeah, I do remember that fellow.
Promotes that, well, that's where this came from, because he gave us several, you know, some, what do you want to say? Mock-up language or some things that they thought were, were great to have for this thing. And at that point, planning commission felt it was a good thing to promote kinds of like, this kind of stuff in the landscape plan, habitat, you know, plants that, that act as good habitat for wildlife. So this, this rule is in there to try to have, you know, like bird baths or whatever, things like that in these developments that are.
But it just says that. Shall, shall be provided in landscape plans.
Right.
Is it a requirement?
Well, here it says, must be provided in a landscape plan when more than two hundred feet from either existing or planned water surface.
So he thinks with every two hundred feet, there should be some kind of.
Right.
Water feature that.
Right. That's about what it was boiling down to, and there's nothing wrong with this, the intent, I don't think, of this, of this paragraph at all, of doing that in their planning and telling them they need to do this, then you can ask a question, where is your water surfaces? But the two hundred foot thing was really something that wasn't working very well. Because you were going to then plop down water surfaces every two hundred feet, and on a large site, this starts maybe to get ridiculous.
So in lieu of that, we're saying you should have a minimum.
We've got a size.
A minimum of twenty-five acres.
Right.
You would be required to have some type of water.
Feature.
Water feature with up to four square feet of water surface for every acre in the development. Up to a minimum of thirty-five acres. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So in the town center development, theoretically, you have the creek already?
Sure, that counts. There's going to be that.
Plus whatever.
Who knows what else? There's going to be detention ponds. And, you know.
This seems better than.
They may have, you know, they may have these artificial waterfalls and creeks, I mean, around the office development and stuff. But you never know what they're going to pop up with in their plan.
Right, okay.
Okay, so. So we got rid of that.
So this was language you came up with?
The two hundred?
The changes here.
Yeah. Yeah. Sixteen twenty-one ten, print eight, print one, ten twenty-one. Well, we're. Twenty minute, hold on. Twenty-one ten. Oh. Twenty-one seventeen. Okay, what page? Forty, one forty-five.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
No, actually, one forty-five. Oh, it's L, I'm sorry, it's not one, it's L. Right?
Yep.
Parks and Recreation Department should be added here since they have a list of prohibited plants. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, that's, and then sixteen twenty-one ten print nine. The first sentence, the word therefore should be omitted. See that in the second line? It is unlawful to fail to maintain landscaping in accordance with the plans therefore submitted.
Oh, right.
All right, number nine is sixteen twenty-one twenty A. Sixteen, now we're way over in twenty-one twenty A. Language from the current code that addressed landscaping which due to dissimilar uses was consolidated and clarified in this subsection. In addition, buffer widths from the original design policies document were added since they were incorrectly inserted by a codifier in the current code. This is, I went through this and, and cleaned this up. We never used it much anyway in the interim while it was in the code, and it wasn't really in a useful, I mean, the way it was set up, it wasn't.
Correct.
So I, where you get these, just under all these different areas, you've got landscape buffers, you've got multifamily residential uses, and you have all this adjacency and buffer widths. So it is, essentially, in terms of the current code, some of that is in there and some of it's not. And you may, maybe on this one, you'd want to take a harder look at it to, to think about these buffers, but this was what was in the original design policy before, when they were a separate document, before they were put in the code. And when they were put in the code, it got a little jumbled up. And so I went through the original design policies document, like I said, and put these buffer distances in there as they occurred in the, in the original design policies adopted by the town. The original design policies for overview were actually put together by a landscape architecture firm a number of years ago for the town. And so they got into this whole buffering thing and dissimilar uses and all of that, and whether you should have a fence or not and so on. And this is all their work. So I'm not quite sure how you want to handle that.
In the future? Or more? Spend more time on it or?
Yeah, a little more in depth.
Probably should have been.
On buffers.
Why don't we pull this, this sixteen twenty-one dash twenty section, and we'll review it in greater detail?
Is there an overall standard that's going on, Fred, where other municipalities is, the environmental stuff has been improved, updates this process or?
Probably. I'm not sure in terms of standard. It's, you get into this stuff, man, it starts to get community specific, what they think, you know, they want, and it's hard to.
Well, I think we should.
I think you need to talk about buffers in, in the context of, and dissimilar uses in the context of, of the community. And look at these and say, does this make any sense? Does this make sense? Does this make sense or not in our, our community at this time? I think we can handle this. Rather than dealing with one tree every thirty feet and getting into that problem, this is a buffer thing. It has to do with how we want these dissimilar uses to set up. Particularly, it'll be applied to anything that's kind of near original town where you've got single family. And now we may have some other uses that are, that are going to want to, just, there's a few parcels left yet that, where some other activity could take place other than just single family use. I mean, heck, we've got now with the Ochsner deal, we even have Gunsel Parks have a buffer of, between two single family developments, believe it or not.
Right.
And that's not even in here.
Right.
It seems redundant, but that's what folks wanted. So the buffering thing was kind of an important part in the past. So.
Yeah, let's pull this.
Pull this one?
Hey Fred, I had a question about item seven. Going back to number seven.
The plant list?
The prohibited plant list.
Yeah.
Are you, are you saying to replace the Boulder County noxious weed list with the Parks and Rec department or?
No, it's, I said added.
Okay.
Add Parks and Rec in there and then, I don't honestly know whether their list is the same as Boulder County's.
Because I think there's a state list as well. I'm thinking about the seller's property disclosure. It's got some noxious weeds listed in there. But I think that's a statewide list somewhat. My question was, would it be better to say, to reference the state list or, or just, I don't know. It's a question.
Well, that's a good point. I, that'd be fine. I mean, I think what we need to do is just address the whole thing. Is, is there, are there three lists?
Yeah, the Parks and Rec's department maintains the list of the town's noxious weed list.
Yeah, so maybe take out the Boulder County noxious weed list and just say Parks and Rec. Let them use whatever list is.
But they might have, well, you're saying there could be something on Boulder County's list as well.
Added onto Boulder or not.
Right. We don't know what they're.
Boulder plus.
Any of them are really.
We don't know. I don't know.
Maybe there shouldn't be, maybe you should.
I just didn't think about it hard enough. I didn't know. So we can ask that question. So there's three lists. Are they the same?
Yeah, why don't you pull that one and just do the research and find out if there's, if there's a state list, a county list, and a, and then what the town's list is. We'll just get, figure out what the best way to handle that is. Okay?
All right. Okay, now take it to section sixteen twenty-one thirty. Is a section about existing trees? That's the same as old section sixteen seven twenty-three in the code. Next one is sixteen twenty-one forty, thing with irrigation. This section is the same as existing code. Subsection D was added by staff to codify the existing policy, which is D in the red. Irrigation shall tie to the water use reuse system of the town. We'd make them do that anyway. Okay?
Okay.
So we go to article twenty-two.
We don't have enough hedges, by the way, Ted.
Huh?
We just don't have enough hedges.
We don't.
We're a desert.
Fences, hedges, and walls. Section sixteen seven forty-three of the current code talks about the removal of fences required upon notice. This was removed since it is superfluous. Section sixteen twenty-two thirty. Fences in residential zones. The references to discouraging chain link and barbed wire fences was removed since chain link is allowed and barbed wire fences were prohibited in section sixteen twenty-two twenty. Didn't we have a discussion about chain link fences?
Did we?
Yeah. And it was specifically with regard to, I don't remember what section that was in. But it had to do with.
Drawing a blank. I'm merely discussing it. I don't know where we, how we got into it.
Because I think what was proposed in the revised code was to not allow chain link fence. And that was taken out. We'd have to go back and look, but that's, kind of reserves, really.
Can you figure out what it was that, so we're consistent?
Yeah, yeah, we'll go back and make sure that. Do you want to do it now?
Not necessarily. I mean, if you, if you can find it, that's fine, but if we, if we can't find it.
Future endeavors. So number one. Yeah, we'll, we'll go back through the earlier articles and make sure.
Just do your little word search for chain link and see where we, where, it showed up before, maybe we just.
Okay. All right, so. Yeah, we'll check. We'll pull this one out. Oh, got the wrong one. Okay, next one is number three. Section sixteen twenty-two forty, fences in the business, or the community business zone. Staff felt that both chain link and barbed wire should be prohibited in these zones. Fences in commercial, basically, they are in all these, these commercial type and industrial zones.
Is there any fencing around Guardian?
There are, there is, but it's.
Okay. There's chain link.
Now, we need to coordinate that.
Superior Storage. Oh, no, it's runner.
So we're saying that in the IH zones, there's no chain link.
The front gate is, front gate is all.
I don't believe so.
I don't either.
Nope. Oh. But that's what's happening.
C-DOT might have. C-DOT, I think.
But not around the storage area or?
No, I don't think so.
Well, anyway, what do you want to do with that one? Sixteen twenty-two forty.
We, I, we should probably just pull that one too and just make sure everything matches throughout.
Yeah, we need to coordinate this stuff. This is article. So two, three. Okay. Next. Sixteen twenty-two forty E, which would be on the next page. Metal caps on tops of posts are now prohibited unless they are painted to match the post. That's a small deal, isn't it? What was the words before in there? I think was on the last sentence. Metal caps on posts were generally not acceptable. And it says, there's a note there that is deleted, but what was deleted were the words generally not acceptable.
Which was. Either say it's prohibited or not, right?
Yeah.
Don't be ambiguous, right?
So, yeah, so they said prohibited. Maybe the whole idea of, you might want to, you know, want to visit that again to deal with metal caps. I mean, do we care?
I don't care. I think they should be painted a match.
Somebody had some wild idea, I guess they could.
Yeah, that was.
Copper colored caps or something. Come on. What is going on?
Do you want to just eliminate that?
No, I just say just leave it.
Okay. The way it is.
If you're going to put a metal cap on, it's got to be painted.
Painted, all right. We're going down, we're drilling down that far, we might as well do something with it, right?
That's right.
All right.
Let's not be ambiguous about what color the metal cap is.
Okay. Next one is article twenty-three. Section sixteen twenty-three twenty, loading and service areas. This was section sixteen seven sixty-two in the current code and was mislabeled by the codifier. So you ended up with a different label, title, so big deal. Nothing there. Now, B, on the next page is where you get the additions that we just saw coming from somewhere else. So number two is subsection sixteen twenty-three twenty, per, F, and G have been moved intact from other parts of the current code. We just talked about those.
Yep.
So they deal with loading and loading and also secondary service entrances, that'd be in the multifamily, so on. Section sixteen twenty-three thirty, this is the one we were looking for before, trash and recycling areas. That was over in the utilities section. So it's a combination of section sixteen seventy-three and sixteen four fifty-three of the current code and are technically intact. So, so this is all kind of tied together in terms of the trash and recycling areas. So that's, that's a good thing. Okay? That. Whoa, okay. Here's where we, the next one is article twenty-four. This is all the parking stuff. And here's another place where we can either spend thousands of hours dealing with parking or we can say, well, you know, we're okay with these basic standards, to heck with it, because if we get into a PD, we're going to discuss parking anyway.
Right.
So at any rate, what, what I pulled out of here that was, I guess, stuff that we, that we might want to discuss or not is, starting with number one, subsection sixteen twenty-four ten A. This is the chart here on page one fifty-five. This chart has been modified by staff for clarity and to simplify some numerical quantities so the notes for this chart are intact. Okay?
Okay.
So that's all we did there, was just kind of clean it up. You can see on the next page, we didn't, you know, I mean, we didn't go after any of this stuff in terms of, of how many spaces for what. Because we have a question, there is, where do we reference the, yeah, here up in the top on, on subsection A of this one in one fifty, page one fifty-five, the third edition of the parking generation? We go, we use that when we get into a something that either is not listed here or we want to maybe clarify so that when we talk about parking in a, in a PD, we have another document to refer to, which, and that thing is updated now and then. It's about that thick, so it slices out these uses even more so with studies and average.
Can't imagine we would want to go through the time and effort that Inter, International.
It's worse than the.
Institute of Transportation Engineers has got to.
Right, it's worse than signs, to be honest with you, to deal with that.
What about?
And I think we're, we're comfortable, everything, whenever I turn to the parking generation material, the transportation engineers, I mean, that's all they're using.
Right.
What about instead of putting the third edition, put the most current?
We could do that, yeah. Okay.
So we don't have to change it every time.
So that would be.
And you don't want to be stuck with what may be old information.
I don't know, the second edition had a lot of good things, they took out the third edition.
Fourth edition might deal with spaceships and things.
Yeah, that's right. That's a good point.
Omit third.
You just don't know about.
Personal transporters, segways.
In.
Hovercraft.
Most current.
Everyone knows.
All right, good idea.
Okay.
We'll just do that and we'll go on. All right, sixteen twenty-four ten E. Parking area standards. E two. The second sentence was added by staff to reflect current parking lot design policy. We want two accesses or hammerhead space. If you have more than eight and a maximum of sixteen. And then if you've got more than sixteen spaces, you'll have two points of access or a loop drive to accommodate, to a common access. So we don't end up, basically, we don't end up with these long dead end rows.
I guess it sounds good, but you just can't predict with every piece of property. I mean, you can't always have two points of access for every point of property, so.
No, but you can loop it around.
But you may not have room to loop it around.
You may not.
Then you might not need to have room for sixteen spaces.
Yeah. I mean, parking is, I mean, everyone needs to deal with that. And basically what happens is if you've got too big a lot and one access, then it gets to be an issue of, at the access.
Would, would the ITE make recommendations in this particular instance?
They're just talking about number of spots.
If you had more than eight spaces in a row and a maximum of sixteen, would ITE say you should do?
I just want to hear.
I'm just trying to reference it back to.
No, it's more in just general site design principles. Terms of parking itself.
Is this something that we would see on a proposed plan? We could address it on a case by case basis? That's, that's all I'm saying, is why, why box yourself in with code when you could?
Well, what we would do, well, here, let's say for instance, we run into a problem and this guy is, you know, he doesn't have any options other than what you're talking about. Well, you know, we, we can bring that, we, maybe we just get a loggerheads there and we just say, well, let's discuss this with the planning commissioner, or we've got an idea, maybe we, we can, as staff, we're okay with whatever they've come up with. It just doesn't quite meet this thing and we, so then we, we talk about that. If it's a PD, we're in pretty good shape, you know, because we can, we have the flexibility to do that. Normally, if you're going to end up with a site that's got, what, sixteen spaces, we may be over that, what is it, the minimum? One acre? By the time you get the open space in there, the parking and the building itself. See, where this gets, might get, Germaine is up here, if we want to see some rezoning or on these couple of business zone lots here in original Superior, where they're trying to put something on a site. That's where we're going to run into, you know, how, how is that, how is this going to apply to them?
There's always. There's always procedures to deal with things like this. They can, like you said, they can come before the planning commissioner. Ask for variance.
We can, if it's a standard zone lot, you know, we can, you get down to a certain point, we can suggest a variance.
Right.
We just can't work it any other way. They can get the parking in there, but they can't get the two axes.
Yeah.
You want to pull this for? When we have.
I don't, I don't feel that strongly, but you guys do?
I don't feel like it needs to be pulled per se, but I just, I do have concerns about getting so specific with the unknown that requiring someone to come in, I mean, you say come into the planning commission, but that's, that's no small feat. I mean, that's, you know, that's a fairly, not a big deal, but it's just an added step
About laying the cards on the table, so to speak.
I'm just thinking, if someone could bring a plan in that makes sense to staff, why, why send them?
Through the planning commission?
Through the wringer to, to do something that may make perfect sense that doesn't qualify with, with what's. Through the wringer to, to do something that may make perfect sense, that doesn't qualify with, with what's written here.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is that any, any development of significant size is going to come before us with a PD.
And that's, I guess, that's the other point, is it's probably going to come here anyway.
If it's big enough for eight to sixteen spaces, at least, I would think that'd be very...
So you're suggesting you take on all the red stuff?
So the properties that you were talking about, Fred? The properties over here on Maple, Maple and Hope Creek Drive, aren't big enough to have something like this anyway, right?
I don't think so. No, they propose underground parking, actually.
So this wouldn't even really pertain to that one?
No, not unless they were aggregating lots.
Right, and, because the ballpark is the other side, and there's just a couple of other lots to the south. It might not ever happen, that big of a parking area.
It's possible something on Seventy-Sixth Street could fall into, one of the Seventy-Sixth Street properties could fall into something like this.
Well, it would be a PD, probably.
It probably would, but, I don't know. I mean, they're still, they're still fragmented right now, so...
You get the one acre property.
I'm with you, I mean, I think...
I just think it's going to come up, it's going to come here anyway, so why, why put it in the code, because it's going to...
You guys want to strike? Pull it, strike it?
Yeah, just strike it or pull it, I guess. Why does it strike?
I'm okay with it.
With what? Pulling it, okay, we'll just pull it for now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Number three, Article twenty-four.
Hold on a second here, three, subsection sixteen twenty-four fifty E. All right, we've got to jump over a few pages, because everything else is insane. Section one sixty-two? Section sixteen twenty-four stuff, ten, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, what, I missed one here? Sixteen twenty-four ten E two, did we do that one yet? That's the one we just pulled, that's the one we just pulled, okay.
Number three.
Next one, sixteen twenty-four fifty E, so that's down the line here.
Section one sixty-two, or page one sixty-two.
Yes, one sixty-two, and you'll notice that we've passed a bunch of pages, that's because everything's the same. The figure referenced should be omitted. That was in...
Because it's not referencing Figure sixteen?
Yeah, it says, "See Figure sixteen." Well, Figure sixteen doesn't really tell you anything about what this is all about. Got it?
Yep.
So that one's okay. Uh, so then we go to sixteen dash twenty-four sixty, which is the next page. Parking areas, et cetera, subsection sixteen six ninety-six of the current code was deleted because it occurs in subsection sixteen twenty-four sixty A. That's this one here.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then we can, now we can move along a little bit here, if everyone's feeling good about it, we can... This next one is Article twenty-five. This one is the same as the current code, some titles have been fixed and superfluous language omitted. I mean, there's just really nothing happening here. So that gets us to Article twenty-six, storm drainage, water management, and erosion control, which is Article thirty-nine of the current code. This article's been technically, kept technically intact from the current code, under sixteen twenty-six forty D. Forty D, that's way over, over molly.
One seventy?
Yeah, A, B, C. Somebody else, where is D?
Here's D.
Uh-oh.
Six pages.
Procedure.
There it is, it's on one seventy-two.
Yep, there you go. Procedure. This section was expanded by transferring the application's bill requirements to section sixteen eighty-eight to the current code of this section. So that came out of the back of the code intact, pretty much. Section sixteen dash twenty-six sixty A and D. Sixteen A and D, all right, that's over on one seventy-five. The acronyms do not need to be spelled out because they're listed in on the definitions, so I went through those. I think we meant, I think we went through that before, in the definition section. All righty, that gets us to Article twenty-seven, which is steep slopes, which is Article fifty. No, XL, what's XL? Ten?
Sixty.
Sixty, no.
No.
Forty.
XL, forty, yes, forty.
XL, is X in front of the L? Okay, yeah, forty, of the current code. This article's been kept technically intact from the current code, it's the same. Okay? Six, Article twenty-eight. Subsidies hazard areas, this is Article fifty-one, no, forty-one of the current code. This article's been kept technically intact from the current code. Goes on, twenty-nine. Article twenty-nine is the same, it's the same as Article thirty-eight of the current code. That gets us to Article twenty... We had twenty-nine. Takes us over to Article thirty, which is mobile homes. That's the, let's see, here is, the only thing changed here was in Article, in section sixteen thirty dash fifty-five, replaced the planning commission with the manager, so let's, let's look at that one, number subsection five and fifty. Sixteen thirty fifty. Additional information is being required by... The planning commission in this, and in this whole deal, we've been replacing that with the manager, okay? Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Then the rest of the article on mobile homes is the same. And the last one is Article thirty-one, which is swimming pools. That's the same. And that's where I stop, because I got tired, I think, and then we'll go after telecommunications until day five. Like, probably should have gone on, eh? Well, we did, I mean, we're pretty far, I mean, we only have to go to now thirty-six, I believe. So we have six more articles to go, about ten pages. Yeah, it's not much, we can certainly knock these off in the next time.
Okay?
How's that sound?
Good for me.
Works for you. Good. Because we're going to have plenty to do, once we get through here, because our, our list is growing, but not that... See, the list is growing slower as we go through the end here.
Yeah, tough start.
Yeah.
Well, the one problem, the only problem with that, sort of the process we're going through, is we're talking about the techni, the revisions, you know, just the, the moving around of the parts and pieces, right? And the, and then the, the changes that you've recommended or made, either deletions or additions. But we don't get into a review of the code itself, of the, of the chapter itself, you know, the article itself, where we're looking, where we're fully looking at, as a body, yes. And I'm not, I don't know that we should do that necessarily, at least not necessarily in this exercise, but, you know, the attorney has gone through and made, and the planner has gone through and made, you know, recommended changes, but the planning commission hasn't necessarily gone back through it, in any great, in great detail.
I think we pulled out things that we felt needed a little...
Well, we just skipped over, like, I just noticed, we just skipped over a bunch of stuff, and I was, I just started flipping through the mobile home section thinking, geez, are we ever going to build a mobile home park in town?
No, but I think we need to have that in the zoning.
Yeah, I'm not sure that anything will end up accommodating it.
We need it in the zoning, because I don't think we can not have it. It's like we have to have a mobile home zone, so if we have a mobile home zone, we have to have, you know, regulations to go with it.
Sure.
So we'll never use it.
Businesses, too.
Right.
Well, we have to have it. And I think...
Never say never, right?
Once we get through these last articles, then we're going to have some work to do, to incorporate everything, and get everything prepared to go back through for the public hearing, but I think we can use that as an opportunity, not necessarily to go through the entire document again, but at least if there's some sections that the planning commission would like to, maybe take a meeting just to focus on, we could, we could also do that. I mean, there's no...
I understand.
Rush to get through, so...
Okay.
Yeah, aren't we totally off, I mean, aren't we setting ourselves up to have the stuff that we want to have, we've just said, "Okay, we're okay to have changed," or we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing on that, and then go back again and pick up these numerous loose ends, and how do we have a public hearing of those?
Yeah, that's going to be an interesting process, I think.
That's very difficult.
Yeah, how many public hearings over how long a time?
Well, I think anything that's changed content-wise from the, from the existing code should be reviewed within the context of a public hearing. I mean, isn't that the intent of, we're changing the code, I mean, right?
Well, the public hearing may be...
Other than, like you talked about, sort of, just some language cleanup or something, I'm not too concerned about that, but something in terms of con, actual content.
Maybe we could clump some of them together.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Bill?
I mean, maybe we could clump some of it together.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you have...
So we have one public hearing that's covering, say, two or three or four topics. This is after we've made the changes that everyone agrees on, right? But we have to have a public hearing on that.
Yeah, I mean, you've got to be able to present the changes, in the, in the format, for the, for the public to comment on, right?
That's going to be difficult.
Well, it's difficult in the sense that, and I, I would focus again on the, on the, not so much on the format of it, but of the, the content itself. This is the presenting, this is the new chapter sixteen, or the new article, sorry, new article ten, and these are the items that changed from what was in the existing code, wherever it came from, right? This was the content that changed, these were the things that were deleted, and this is the, the language that was changed.
But not necessarily go back to the old code and say, like we've been doing...
Well, we're, we're going back through, yeah, we're going, well, I'm saying, yes, exactly.
For the public hearing.
Right, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know the public, public's going to care where it came from. They're interested in the code, and what the language says, right? At least, that's my take on it.
What effect?
Yeah, what's the, what's the effect on...
I think, though, we've pulled quite a list of what we would consider hot-button issues, they're, they're big changes, they're changes in height, there are changes in things that could really affect people, and I think those are the things that should be laid out on the table at the, at a public hearing, but, I mean, to go through and say, "We moved this to that..."
No, no, that's my point.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm saying, is, it doesn't matter where we moved it from.
Right.
What matters is what the content, how the content changed, exactly, like you're saying. If we're going from thirty to thirty-two feet, or whatever.
That's why, yeah, that's why the public has us here doing this, they're not here doing it.
Right, exactly.
They don't want to hear all that.
They just wanted to talk about the, at least that's my take on it. So that's, I would guess, how, my, my recommendation about how you focus on, on how to present it to the, in a, in the format of a public hearing.
So once, yeah, once we complete these final articles, we'll have some work to do on our end.
And I would suggest, too, when we get all through, that we go back through our list of things to, that we've pulled, like some of the things we pulled tonight, I think with another round of discussion, we could eliminate, we could settle on those, and then just put that to rest, and kind of take it, make the list shorter.
Right, yeah. Good idea. Yeah, I might be thinking of those, because you've gotten this continually updated list, and Matt needs to put in articles, I think it's one through five are still not there yet, we need to pick that up off our notes, and just get that in there.
Well, I mean, I guess I envision that we, we'll finish the code, and then we'll start to tackle these, as you say. Maybe that first round is we're scrubbing the list one more time, and then we can say, yes, we can resolve this now, or no, we still need you to do your thing, right?
Okay.
I think that's probably a good idea.
And maybe before that, we go through that list, too, you could get the, maybe so we can get the attorney questions answered or addressed.
Oh, yeah.
And knock that, perhaps knock that list out with it, too.
Yeah, some of the attorney questions may clarify some of these other sections that we, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to sit down and think about. So that, we should probably, if he's going to answer it, maybe we have a session with him, I don't know. Rather than looking just at a piece of paper that they might put together to answer.
Yeah, I think that, that having the attorney here to answer those questions in a discussion format would probably be useful, useful time.
Maybe to have him answered on paper as part of a packet that we can read...
Oh, definitely.
Before, but then have him here for discussion, but...
Provide a response, and then we can...
Right.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Sounds like a plan.
Anything else? Anyone? Anyone? We have a new trustee?
We do, the board appointed George Cuffner Senior last night to the board. On a four to two vote.
Good.
And he has to run, I understand, right? Yeah, he'll have to.
Yeah, that seat is open for election, right?
And he was, they voted on that last night, but he'll be sworn in at the first meeting in January, so... And then, for those that didn't hear before the meeting, the board approved the Ochsner development last night. After a good discussion, I thought. For the planning commission, the Madison annexation and zoning will be at the first meeting in January, on which after the last...
It's the second meeting in January, though, right?
No, no, we don't need a public hearing for that one, so if we don't happen to have a forum, we can just, we don't, we don't have to, since it's not a public hearing, we can just continue to the next meeting.
Got it, okay. What did we, what did we hold off for the first meeting?
Guardian storage, final development plan, and the Rocky Mountain Fire...
Expansion.
Five expansion.
Got it.
Those will be public hearings.
Okay, well, busy, busy January.
Busy January, yes, yes.
Okay, that's all, that's all I got.
When, when do we meet again?
January fifth.
January fifth is the regular meeting, but, but we pushed the public hearings off to the second meeting, because we were afraid of running into through the holidays and things like that.
Pretty quick after the meeting.
Okay.
We have to respond.
Close then, we'll work session.